Starting the recording and we are now live.
Okay, welcome to the February 3rd, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I'll begin with roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeal.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Leah McGovern.
Sorry, here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verity will be late. Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. And I see Andy Port, Director of Planning Development, Kaitlin Sullivan Planner. And last but definitely not least, Linda Guthrie, our note taker. Thank you all for being here. The agenda, no public hearings, other business. We have a request for continuance by the Bavaro Family Realty 2 LLC. And we'll deal with that in a moment. Approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Potential zoning amendments has to do with the planning priorities tonight. And at the end, Andy will give us a review of new legislation affecting zoning decisions. So we'll begin with the request for a continuance. It's a minor site plan review at 177 State Street. You have the brief explanation in the staff report, which seems justifiable. May I have a motion to continue this to February 17th?
I'm so moved. Okay, second.
Okay, who was the first one, please?
Tanya.
Okay, and the second was Rick.
Yes.
Any questions or comments to be made about this? All right, I'll take roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. So they'll come on February 17th. I need a motion to approve the minutes from January 20th.
So moved, Alden?
Thank you, second?
Second, Rick.
Okay, Rick? Any comments? I'll take roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
I abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Thank you. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So minutes are approved. So the item that says potential zoning amendments is really for discussion of our planning priorities. Let me just give some introductory comments on how we'd like to go about doing this tonight. As you know, there was a committee of Alden and Rick and myself to review our laundry list, I guess you'd call it, that we had produced as a board to try to fine tune it. And the four of us did some research and we got together on, I believe it was the 20th, with Andy and Caitlin for a Zoom meeting. So the list you have in the staff report is the output of that discussion. It was recorded, but we didn't take any minutes because we figured that list with some details would suffice to summarize where we ended up. So what we've proposed to do now is to go over each topic, explaining the pieces as we've sort of roughed them out here. There are not going to be any committees established at this time. And that's basically to relieve pressure on the staff who have to host Zoom meetings during the pandemic. And just a real complication of getting together during this time and to make sure that we abide by the open meeting law. There's also, there are also several zoning related, well, just call it legislation, I guess, that's being prepared by the staff to go to the city council in the next couple of months as Andy has outlined for us in the past. So there's no real bandwidth with, among the staff to take on major other items. So we don't want to be barreling ahead and creating work that can't be moved forward. So all that's to say is that we have another way to approach these priorities so we can continue to do some planning together. We're going to ask for one lead volunteer for a topic. And that person can speak one-on-one with board members, other boards and commissions and committees and members of the public or staff who have knowledge about that topic. So that that person doesn't feel like they're a one-person show. And that kind of communication is definitely okay. We would ask that they prepare some type of progress report. This is nothing formal or, you know, burdensome, just what you've learned over time to either present as an interim progress report at any planning board meeting in this slot called potential zoning amendments on the agenda. Or, and in particular, we would ask that everyone make a report of their progress at that June 16th meeting that we've set aside for planning. But we really want to hear from people sooner rather than holding it all up until then. So that's kind of how we want to move forward with this. And then when you bring your stuff back to the board, we'll obviously talk about it, see where it fits in with what's going on elsewhere. And if we in fact want to take one or more topics and turn them into a full-blown official committee working on it on various aspects of that topic. So we're going to start gently. It's going to be an iterative process. And it allows us to do some planning on the side of dealing with all the applications and other requests for our decisions that we have on a regular basis. I also should say that some of the topics may not get a volunteer tonight. I hope they all do, but if they don't, well, we'll just put them to the side. There's probably a reason for it, a very legitimate reason. If nobody wants to work on it, there's no point in, you know, pushing the issue. The other thing is, some members may decide that they don't want to be a lead volunteer on a topic. But you have an interest in it and you'd like to work with that person. And it's fine. You can either mention that tonight or you can get in touch with them afterward. Because after tonight, I'll put together the list of topics and who's going to lead the ones that have been chosen to be led. And Caitlin will send that around everybody. So we're trying to make it easy for people to fit this into their busy lives and also accommodate the desire to do more planning. Let's see, are there any questions about, about this whole process before we go into talking about the individual topics? Okay. What?
Can I just add one thing, but I just want to highlight that this is really the result of our, our committee.
Yeah.
And these are what we thought were the priorities. But if there's something else that we've missed, certainly that's, that's something that I'd welcome anybody to, to say that there's, we've missed a huge topic that we should be working on and, and, and maybe that person would like to take a lead on that, whatever it is.
This reminds me of being in the corporate world where you came up with a, a problem and you became part of the solution. But yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, and so Rick and I are going to present them. Alden and Anne, please jump in at any time. Because this is the result of four of us working together on, on these topics. And we want to hear from you as well. All right. Let me begin with the first one, which is the most interesting of all, because I'm going to propose that we put this on hold. And the reason being that we had a conversation with Andy. And there are two issues here. As you know, you guys asked me to draft up a letter to request funding for a 3D model to be produced for Waterfront West with the information we have so far and to give us some flexibility in, in reviewing other scenarios. And first point of contact from Andy was with the mayor, who does not see this as a spending priority right now. The second contact would be with the city council if there is sort of an encouragement from the Planning and Development Chair, Heather Shand. So we're still leaving that door open a little bit. They'd have to come up with funding from whatever sources they have available to them. I'm not quite sure there are any if, if the mayor holds the, the strings to the, to the budget. But be that as it may, to go forward at this point to consider other zoning amendments to the overlay district would be a little bit difficult to do without dealing with the consensus on massing and height. So we could potentially do that at some point, but for now, we decided to see at least if city council is interested in collaborating with us in some way. And if that's possible through Heather, we could put it back on the table. Rick, would you like to add anything to that for clarification?
No, I think that, you know, we had, the only thing I would add is that we, over a year ago, I think we talked about doing a, a joint committee with the council and, and that we were sort of waiting for the council to be ready to work on it. And I think that we, some of us have been very impatient about that, but recognizing also there's limited capacity to take on new tasks. So again, I think we'll just take the lead from the city council for a while. I am concerned about, I, I don't want to be in a position of reacting to a proposal that comes in. So I think we just need to keep our finger on the pulse of, you know, where the developers is, is going and whether they're making noises about coming back, in which case we'd want to ramp up things. But for now, it's, everything seems pretty quiet. So I think we can be quiet too.
Okay.
I, I have a comment. If Counselor Shand expresses some interest. I'm thinking this could fall in the category of a CPA grant proposal and wondered when the next round might be. And who might be an applicant for that?
This is Andy.
Don is on the committee. I'd like Don to respond to that first, please, if he can.
And I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that one more time?
Um, yes. Again, if Counselor Shand expresses some interest in, you know, looking at a model for Waterfront West, I'm assuming that could fall within the guidelines for community preservation funding. And so my question is, when is that next round of proposals? And who might, might be an applicant? I mean, the city is an applicant.
Okay.
On, on other projects.
Right. They're due, they're, they're, the RFP requests for proposals are out. Today's, they're due and Andy or Caitlin may know better, but I think they're due sometime in, in, in February. Where the rubber meets the road is in March, we, or we set something in February for when we can, we can discuss it. So typically, March and the beginning of April is kind of a heavy month where we'll take a look at, at these, at the different proposals.
And Don, do you mind if I address that?
Sure.
Yeah, so proposals actually for the current round of CPC are actually due tomorrow. Just to update you on terms of the timeframe, Don's right that in that March timeframe and sometimes longer, the committee spends a lot of time reviewing the proposals, but the actual deadline for this round is tomorrow. They, it is relatively straightforward application. I have a couple of comments on that, though. One is, I don't think it would actually be eligible for CPA funding with one narrow window, with the exception of one narrow window. So it, the CPA has to be used for one of the express purposes. So it's really not an open space or historic preservation or, you know, the modeling or the zoning change per se. An argument I think could be made that it's, it's related to trying to generate at least to some level affordable housing. But I, again, I think I would question whether or not the CPC and the council would appropriate it, thinking that the model itself was necessary to achieve, you know, the, the affordable housing component, I guess. So I just point that out only because I, I agree with the funding of this task. I think it should be done. I would have no problem with it being funded right now. And I think that would be wonderful so we could get going on it. But, but I also recognize, you know, the pandemic situation and the sort of reluctance to do expenditures that may not seem, you know, necessary from certain people's perspective. So I don't think the CPA would work for that, I guess is what I'm saying. There may be other sources, but I don't think that one would work.
I remember when I was on the CPA, we funded a feasibility study for the Maritime Museum. And I think it was a little out of the ordinary, but the, the committee eventually agreed. You know, it's a very important resource in our community. I think that came under historic preservation. So anyway, I'm sorry to hear the deadlines tomorrow. Although, Rick, you could probably whip something off. What are you doing tonight? Anyway, okay.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this topic before we move on?
Well, just, just a question on this. It was unclear to me, is the decision to fund this solely in the hands of the city council, solely in the hands or of the mayor? Or is it some combination of the two?
I believe it's a combination, Andy. Could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Yeah, there are several dimensions to that. If it's, if you're talking about funding, you've got to have the mayor and or the council, you know, there's got to be an appropriation by the council in some format or some account that can be used. We don't have that right now. So the assumption was a transfer. I would leave it to the mayor and the council to decide, even with the finance director, what account or, you know, where to pull those funds from. You know, again, I have to defer to them to some degree over how, you know, funds and how they're being used during the time of the pandemic. But you can initiate those sort of things by making a request. You can still send the letter or the request to the council and so forth. But I know that there are some councils will be skeptical, skeptical of spending money right now on this, though, or others that may feel, you know, as a few of you have said, which is let's get ahead of the curve and let's get the zoning or modeling and zoning we want in advance. Maybe they'd be willing to advocate for that, you know, and explain to the administration that they do think that appropriation should be done now. But in either case, that's where the monies come from, as far as working on the actual text and things like that. I mean, staff can spend time working on text and different provisions with you that are beyond the massing and, and, you know, scaling of things. But to me, because that's the one fundamental issue that has never really been resolved and it's always so much, so much debate, I think having some consensus on that first makes a lot of sense because then you can fill in the other pieces more easily. So that's the reason why I think that that should be mobilized first.
Thanks, Andy. As they say, we're preaching to the choir. Thanks.
Okay, then we'll move on with Rick on the next topic.
Okay. And actually, I'm going to talk about the next three. The Story Avenue, the Environmental and Resilience Review of the Zoning Ordinance and Site Plan Review and Parking. And the reason I think these go together, they're all, they all look at similar or overlapping issues from different points of view. The, the Story Avenue piece is to look at revising that zoning district out of Story Avenue to address traffic management, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, low-impact development, which is really environmentally sensitive development. The possibility of including a mix of residential and non-residential uses and improving the development standards. And that's looking at the point of view of a zoning district and everything that relates to a particular zoning district. The next one is more looking at the entire ordinance from the view of the environment and resilience. And we were thinking about this initially, trying to bring in the, when we were thinking about doing a committee, we were thinking about having representatives from the Resiliency Committee, the Energy Advisory Committee, the Tree Commission, Conservation Commission. And then there are just other people in the city who are, who are knowledgeable and skilled at environmental issues. So we were thinking of trying to bring in all those voices and, and look at what is in the zoning ordinance right now, what could be, what should be updated to be more sensitive to the changing environment and climate and so forth. And as we said in the handout, that the topics would include low-impact development, which we've also mentioned under Story Avenue, landscaping and open space, which I'm going to talk about under Site Plan Review. And solar and wind power and so forth. So that, so where the first one is looking at a zoning district, the second one is looking at the entire ordinance. And then the third one, Site Plan Review and Parking, is looking at the standards for all major development in the city. And, and so that would combine landscaping, open space, again, coordinating on the resilience side, bicycle parking, off-street parking generally, incorporating new technologies such as the lifts that we're, we've been looking at with a couple of applications. And then how the, how parking regulations, particularly, particularly in the downtown, relate to municipal parking lots. So these are, these are, again, three different overlapping ideas. One for the point of view of a zoning district, one from the point of view of a section of the zoning ordinance dealing with development standards, and the third one looking at the entire ordinance through the lens of environment and sustainability and resilience. So I think that we could, you know, anybody, if somebody wanted to look on, work on one of those things, that's a possibility. If somebody wanted to work on two of them, you know, look at, kind of across the board, that's a possibility as well. I think that there's, it really depends on where our interests lie and what we think is most important. So any questions about that?
I, I had a question for Rick or maybe even Andy. The resiliency report that's going to be released later this month, did that committee at all look at zoning or were their objectives otherwise?
They didn't, they didn't really talk much about zoning. There's, there's a, a couple of vague references to it, but it's mostly focused on infrastructure. I think there was some reference to, you know, looking at the floodplain areas and making sure that perhaps building codes are strengthened and that sort of thing. And actually, it's online, so it was released in October and it's been online. I haven't really looked at the whole thing, but I did skim through it just to see what is, you know, whether there was stuff that we could pull right out of it. And there's, there's not that much that's directly applicable.
Yeah, I would agree with Rick on that. It doesn't have the type of detailed action plan you might see for something like that. You know, you might expect, and I would agree with that question because the first thing you might expect in the action plan at the end might be, you know, change zoning along waterfront areas or Palm Island or things like that. Look at, you know, flood regulations, low-impact development, things like that for flooding or whatnot. So, but it does, it does call out some of the issues that, and, and the presentation that will be given on the 18th, we'll, we'll note a few of those things that are mentioned in the plan very briefly, which are, you know, right, the fact that you could do regulatory changes, you could do, you know, capital projects along the coastline, for instance, to protect vulnerable infrastructure for resiliency. But it didn't focus on in detail on that. The, I was not involved in the early parts of that committee and their involvement in drafting the plan. I was pulled in later in the process. And the first thing that I had suggested, and we're going to be following up this plan now with is that, that the plan have a little more detail on actions to be followed. So we're going to be bringing for the next week or two, an update on the master plan and where that's come. But the similar kind of checklist, if you will, that could be regulatory changes, you know, zoning or other projects or issues that can be addressed as part of the action plan and the resiliency plan. But the presentation will explain that there's a good overview of the, the vulnerabilities, the issues that we have and some, some of the strategies that can be used. And we'll get more specific moving forward. To me, the, the Palm Island piece is a key one. As we talk about the waterfront park expansion that we're getting underway in design with and the, any discussions of Waterfront West, those are obviously all areas where we can focus on resiliency. So although it doesn't say it in the resiliency plan, obviously, it, it's implied by some of the language that we should incorporate resiliency into say Waterfront West development.
I'd just like to reiterate more specifically, there's going to be a public presentation on climate, the Climate Resiliency Plan scheduled for Thursday, February 18th at 7:00 PM. You can access it from the city website if you go to the Resiliency Committee. The calendar notes it. And then there is, when you click on that, of course, you get to the agenda and the Zoom connection for members of the public. So if you don't want to read, how many pages, 112 or something? You can get a first, an overview of it, yeah, on February 18th. Thank you, Andy. Any other questions on the three topics that Rick has introduced? Okay, moving on. The next one is design standards. So here's another variation on the theme. Instead of going forward with, you know, actually writing design standards, whatever they turn out to be for wherever they're needed in the city, we decided as a committee that it would be more reasonable to go with a feasibility review. Because probably at some point, we're going to need some professional expertise on this. So the idea of a feasibility review would be to figure out where standards should apply and why they should. The idea being that there are districts and neighborhoods within districts that vary a lot. And while we have a model for how that could be done with the 40R Smart Growth District, if you look in the zoning ordinance, there are quite a few pages there with very good illustrations of what, what building design standards were required for that. It doesn't mean that we can easily come up with those for the, for different places within the, the city. The big focus, of course, would be within the large, I'm not going to, let me see if I can get this right, National Register Historic District. Well, that's encompasses historic buildings, but plenty of them are not contributing. So there's one of the challenges. So this topic would be to consider the feasibility of having such standards, what that might look like in a sort of conceptual way. What locations should be focused on? Which neighborhoods? Should it be for new construction? Should it be for renovations? And distinguish between architectural and site standards as well as, here we go again, guidelines and standards. Guidelines being general guidance and standards tend to be quite much more serious, like requirements. So this is kind of a fun one, if you like that sort of a challenge. So I'll leave it at that. Next one is Planning Board Policies and Procedures. And we already have two hands raised on that when they're ready to get started, Tanya and Beth. So we'll leave it in their capable hands to decide who's going to be the lead and who's going to, you know, be talking with her. So, and anybody else who wants to provide input could call one or the other of them. And the final item on our list is Inclusionary Zoning Revisions. Inclusionary zoning is the word. Inclusionary zoning is the word used in zoning language for affordable housing. Is there anything more than that, Rick? I don't think so. Inclusionary.
Well, I think, I think the inclusionary zoning, so so there there is a there's zoning that encourages affordable housing and there's zoning that mandates affordable housing. So inclusionary zoning is the is the zoning that mandates affordable housing. There are also other types of uh zoning where you might uh provide incentives for uh to provide affordable housing. But this is really our, our inclusionary ordinance requires in certain situations, um some type, and it basically is based on the scale of the housing development, requires some way to provide affordable housing, um whether through a in lieu fee or the actual provision of affordable units. Uh, so it's mandatory.
Or in lieu, okay, so um what we came up with here was the idea to incorporate different levels of affordability in multi-housing projects. Um, that's something that could be mandated if we figured out the language right. Um, there are other amendments such as the proposed accessory units, which hasn't been finalized by the zoning um advisory committee. Um, but something like that could be adapted to um to meet the requirement for inclusionary zoning. Or it may, or it could be incentivized, you know, it could be one of those other examples you were talking about.
Or it's one of those things where we where you distinguish between what they say capital A affordable and small A affordable.
Yeah.
Where capital A affordable is actually uh formally restricted um by income and and rent or cost, uh whereas the small A affordable or if you're developing really small units, maybe they're going to be affordable just by the nature of the unit.
Yeah, exactly. So um, that's a a package there. Any questions on those three topics that we could clarify at this point? So now I open the floor to the first one who gets there, who wants to volunteer for one of these topics.
And again, I think that the idea was uh a couple of ideas. One, if if nobody wants to volunteer for a particular topic, we don't have to do it. Uh, that was just really the, these are the things that would have kind of floated to the top of our list. And the other thing is, if you're interested in something, um and you're, you know, you you're not sure whether you um you're not comfortable being the person for it. Uh, we're all, I think the the idea is you should be if if it's a real, a strong interest of yours, um you should feel comfortable that you can reach out to other people to talk to them and and work with them. We just wanted, we wanted to get away from the problem of having to have a committee that needed to be noticed uh every time it met. So we wanted to have a lead person who who kind of took responsibility for carrying something forward for the next few months. And you know, we'll be, as as Bonnie said, we'd, we'd like to probably have um informal progress reports at at meetings uh going forward, and then maybe at our June planning meeting. You know, have a real sit down and just say, well, what do we, what do we really feel we can focus on for the next few months to get something done?
Okay, I had some interest in the story of and the resiliency. I'm not sure I feel comfortable being a lead on that, trying to get my bearings, but but I do have some interest there to work with someone on those.
Could you take Rick up on his offer to be the lead on one of them and use the resources available to you? Or are you just saying whoever raises your hand for this, I'll call you?
I I would rather start with that, I guess, if.
Start, we start with what?
With uh helping, helping someone else on that. Yep.
So I guess my I mean, I'm interested in everything. I I guess I would be, my interest probably is in the area of the site plan review and parking stuff, but it kind of bleeds, as I said, as I did in my introduction, I, it kind of bleeds over into Story Avenue and the environment and resilience. So I'm going to work.
Yeah, but if you started, if you say you're the lead for site plan review and parking, we might get leads for the others, and then you three could coordinate in a way that doesn't um violate the open meeting law.
Sure.
Good luck. But anyway, one on one, I I'm absolute, I'm I'm not making fun of it. We are very serious about this. And it's very difficult to do during pandemic times, so I appreciate that. But um, why don't you just take the site plan? Do you want to just do the site plan review as the volunteer for that one?
Well, you know, I'm I'm either that one or Story Avenue. If somebody wants to do, if somebody really wants to do one of those others, I'd be happy to. Um, either of those are are my priorities.
Okay.
Let others go first.
So I'm willing to help you on those, Rick.
Okay. We just can't do it formally.
Right.
Well, you can do it one on one.
Yeah, yeah.
Rick, I I would uh I would hope you would do story of some of the examples of work you did up in Portsmouth in terms of, you know, looking at a district and planning. Um I thought that was great work, so I don't, I wouldn't even know how to approach that.
Other volunteers?
Well, I would have interest in um inclusionary zoning.
Okay.
Would anyone else have interest in that?
All right, no, I don't hear any other takers, but you can start. And um I do want to say at this point that um all of us, you included, did some research um where for the subcommittee um on this topic, on all these topics. Um, so for example, I have but you know, Judy Time in any way, the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. So there's a resource for you right there. And anything that we may have in our notes from the research that the four of us have done can support um any of these other topics if we have anything. So I think the four of us are available to anyone who chooses to be a lead. I don't know what.
Hey, Anne, hey, Anne, this is Don. Were you uh, were you volunteering to be the lead on this inclusionary zoning?
I would unless you would want to be.
No, my my interest was that you were going to be. I was just a bit thrown off onto what you just said about about that. So you're when you volunteer for this, your thought was you would be the lead, right?
Um, I would be willing to be, yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm happy to give you a call and and if in fact our our objectives and goals are are uh in line, I'm happy to to work with you on it. And conversely, if we have divergent views, then I don't think I would be productive on it. So I'll give you a call offline and we'll see where we um, where we stand in this, if that's okay with you.
That'd be great, Don. Thank you.
Um, I would like to, I I think I'm a glutton for punishment, but I I'm still um interested in waterfront west, should that ever come back to us. Um, I I I'm not sure I'm comfortable leading it only because I think it might be time for a fresh face on that. And some, some fresh input, but um I would still like to be involved. The other thing is, is uh I would be interested in the um design standards issue.
Can I ask you to be the volunteer lead on the design standards? And because we're putting waterfront west on hold for now, there really isn't an active role.
Which is another reason why I want to be on it.
Design standards will take a little more of your time, probably, but
Yes.
Um, that being said, I'm volunteering to work on that because I'm curious about it. And I have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to put some time into it. So maybe with your direction, I can do some work.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, you and I did the forty D together, so.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I want to build on that. Andy did a great job on pulling that all together. Um, and just see how that would work. But I'm so curious to see what do the different neighborhoods look like? And you know, we have to go into the zoning advisory committee output on that because they did districts. And they broke them down. There's all sorts of stuff in there. So, yeah, all right, we'll we'll work on it. And anybody else who wants to, but certainly um the two of us. So that leaves the environmental resiliency topic. Would someone like to lead that? That that looks across all of the zoning ordinance. So it's like, you know, where would these ideas fit once we know what the ideas are?
So this is Beth. I'd be interested in helping, but I I don't have bandwidth to lead it at this point, especially. Yeah.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah.
I would pretty much say the same thing about um story of resiliency, design standards, that's about, yeah, those are the three that I'd love to just get some input, but I really can't take a lead.
Well, if we don't get a lead on environmental and resiliency, we won't be doing it for now, anyway. Um, you can think about it in your spare time, but um that's not likely to produce very much.
Bonnie, is there another committee that's working on that? Another group? Another board? This is Tanya.
There's a, there's a resiliency committee. That's the group that's put together the plan that's going to be presented on February eighteenth. But this is specifically focused on where in the zoning code do we believe resiliency um regulations need to be incorporated?
So I would, I'd make a suggestion that I think that this is, because it's the entire zoning zoning code. I think that is the kind of thing that any of us who are working on other parts of it can kind of keep in the back of our mind um without necessarily having a um if nobody's really interested in in taking a lead on doing that, I think we can do it kind of by inference or something. Uh, because I could see some, you know, a lot of that happening with looking at development standards and Story Avenue or or site plan standards um and and so forth. So I think that it it may just come up.
Okay, so what I just wrote a note, pull into other topics is relevant.
Yeah, I think so.
We should keep that as a reminder for all of us um working on the other ones.
I think we should all take a look at the at the resiliency report and see if it spurs any thoughts uh as to how it might affect our work.
Okay, so here, I'll um I'll volunteer to be the, what shall I call it? The repository of your ideas on how resiliency would fit into other topics or into the zoning as you um either work on those other topics and or review the resiliency plan or think about it in your, you know, other, other lives. So, but I'm not leading, I'm just kind of like open to keep notes, note taker.
Right.
At least, you know, just a focus point so that we um don't lose any of that and make sure we keep, keep it going. This looks like we're going to be busy.
Yeah.
But in a good way, I please don't feel like, you know, if you can't get to it, you're a bad person, or if um you have to do too much work on it and feel like it's stressing you. I don't want any of that to happen. Um, you can always call me um or Rick and talk about what's going on in your work before you make a interim report um or before the June sixteenth meeting. We want it to be fun. Engaging, educational, all that good stuff. Um and we want to do good stuff for the city. And this planning board usually does planning only when our feet are to the fire. So this is a a real luxury we have to do it at our own pace. And as updates come along, like um what Andy was talking about, the master plan and the zoning rewrite from the advisory committee, or if that committee gets reconstituted, we may be asking for another volunteer to join that. Um, this all is gonna sort of feed one into the other. And on the other hand, I don't want you to think either that we have these grand expectations that a whole lot of stuff is going to get done or in a, in a very short period of time. Uh, but we do want to see some some progress made, and we'll be checking in with you, even if it's only for me to say I don't have anything on the agenda for potential zoning amendments tonight. Who's got something to say on their topic, their planning topic? Could be as informal as that, or um somebody says they want to do uh have a conversation about something they've uncovered.
So Bonnie, all that said, um, what, what kind of, what are the expectations for the groups? I mean, imagine each one's a little different, but.
Well, we would like to hear from um each person um sometime before June sixteenth on the progress you're making. Each one is different, so um it, it's pretty much exploratory for these first few months, I think. I don't want to say you have to come up with goals, objectives, strategies and action plans by June sixteenth. That's not what I'm expecting. If you do, that's great. Um, or a a proposal for a zoning amendment that has to be obviously discussed with everybody. Um, so it can be anything as long as there's something. How's that?
It's good.
That's the closest I can get. We may get clear. I know Don gave us a really good um point of reference when we were talking the first time about this. That if you don't have very clear um goalposts, to use a generic term, you'll never know if you got there. And that's my very broad paraphrase of what he said. And I appreciate that because like many of you, I've worked on projects um where when the clearer the outs expectations are, the more likely are you are to meet them. Um, in this case, we're going to try it as more exploratory. Um, and if by uh June, June, we find that this isn't working, we'll hone it down, focus in and put our, some feet to the fire. But that's not meant to be a threat, I hope. Sound that way. Any other clarifications that anyone would like to to make?
So just where are we? I I guess I volunteered to lead Story Avenue. Is that, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, um I've got you down for Story Avenue, and I've got you down for site plan review and parking.
I think, you know, I'll drag all of those.
Yeah, and MJ is gonna do some um inputting on Story Avenue. Um, going down the list, environmental resiliency, I'll be the note taker because people are going to be working on their own topics and bringing in resiliency is relevant. But Beth and MJ said that they were interested in providing some input on that, so I'll be looking to hear from them. But I'm not the, I'm not going to be doing that much work on it, right? To be very honest with you. Um, design standards, Leah is going to take the lead. Um, MJ and I will have said tonight, anyway, that we'd like to provide input on that. Um, I left planning board policies and procedures with Tanya and Beth. And inclusionary zoning, I have Anne as the lead and Don at this point uh would like to talk to her about um whether or not their ideas are going in the same direction that they want to work together. And the door is open for anybody to contribute to any of those. That list will um will get to you in the next few days. And it's in the notes, of course, and on the recording. Are we done with this for now? Because if we are, I will hand it over to Andy to talk about um zoning adoption mostly, um changes. Zoning adoption mostly changes that have been mandated by the state. And where that leaves us in Newburyport.
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm gonna throw up on the screen for your benefit. Some of the language in the bill and I'm just gonna skim through that to highlight a couple of things that I think are important. And I have no problem if folks want to jump in if you have a question along the way. Let me just pull up the. Sorry, I had to pull up the right document. Okay, so hopefully you can see this. So this is the same document you should have received the email. It's a, I have some highlights in there of some things I thought were worth noting. At any rate, the red lines in that show for the bill, each line of the bill. There's a couple of pages there between 35 and a few pages down. All of that is related to chapter 48, so the zoning act. And that therefore, as Bonnie said, impacts local communities like Newburyport, all generally following. Under the zoning act and then beyond that home rule for their, you know, authority to regulate land uses locally. So there's a couple of things in here. I'm going to skip over this first term here because in isolation, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but. There is a definition in there about multifamily and the reason for that is because it's used elsewhere, as I'll explain. In a moment, I'll explain right now that the bottom line is that there's now a requirement. That in order to be eligible for certain grant programs. The local communities who are around the MBTA, who have a stop essentially have to have multifamily housing of some type in close proximity. So I believe that we meet that requirement with our 40 hour district. However, we are still waiting for some additional guidance because the. Legislature didn't pin it up completely, but I believe that based on what we have in our 40 hour district, we meet that requirement already under zoning. Meaning we do not need to adopt a new zoning for that area in order to be eligible for the state grant programs that are involved.
Just a question on that. I saw in the language, it talks about a half a mile from the MBTA station. And I, it just seems to me that the, the boundaries of our zone don't go out that far. Is there any concern with that? That the half mile radius would go further than our, our defined zone?
Yeah, some of this comes down to interpretation and application. I do not believe that, although it could be read that way. I don't think that they're going to interpret it as meaning that everything within the half mile radius. Just that it has to be within that half mile radius and then there'll be of some, because they use the term reasonable in there, some reasonable size. So I think that what will happen is the legislature, I think, couldn't say for every community what would make sense there. So they left a little bit of flexibility for the state agents to use the MBTA and DHCD to provide some clarity on that. So we're going to get clarity, but I don't think it's going to be expected that it's a half mile out from the station, even though one certainly could read it that way.
Okay, thanks.
So skimming along and again, if jumping, if you have a question. Oh yeah, this is the, the provision right here and I won't reread the whole thing, but it has to be located not more than 0.5 miles from the Community Rail Station. And our density, this is a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. We have higher than that, so we go up to. Actually, in our 40 hour district, it's 20 units per acre minimum and 30 maximum in, in. One of the sub-districts near Route 1 and the rest of the district is 40 units per acre maximum. So we're, we're already meeting that threshold there, I think, and I believe that we'll see that we don't have to change our zoning. We certainly could, but we don't have to change our zoning in order to still comply with this new provision. The most important thing, and I think that Rick has obviously picked up on this is an interesting area. I know that the Housing Trust, I think, is interested in this area. Is the two thirds vote provision or provisions and what's happening here is the legislature has. Received concern from communities, local planners and others looking to change zoning for years. But now that there's the pandemic and there's, it's additional incentive to make housing more economical and more viable. Sort of a timely way to get some of these adjustments made. The voting threshold for certain things like changing zoning ordinances locally. To allow multifamily housing under certain parameters and other things in this boat list I'll skim through. Has been reduced from the, the two thirds vote required to change zoning to only a simple majority. And that's like general ordinances would be a simple majority. This zoning act actually mandates that they, that zoning ordinances be done by two thirds vote. So this lowers the threshold. This is something that others have been asking for for a while. I do see some benefits because it allows. Maybe for some more reasonable or responsible changes to happen.
Andy, I'm sorry, is it for any, any zoning ordinance now?
No, and that's, I thank you for, yeah, the, the real highlight here is this is all about multifamily housing or housing and multifamily housing. So it's really not, there is a reference in here to accessory dwelling units and to mixed use in denser areas. But this is really not about, you know, commercial or things like that. This is about creating more housing. So the idea here is, and what you're seeing in these provisions is it has to be. You know, to allow as of right, multifamily or mixed use developments in eligible locations. I could go back up with the eligible locations is, you know, your denser areas. Your train station stops. You can do accessory dwelling units with this. You can do open space residential development can be considered, you know, part of. And then increasing the permissible density in a district or creating accessory units. That's something else that can be done now by a simple majority vote as opposed to a two thirds majority vote. You, we need to consider whether or not, if we bring forward changes, whether or not we're packaging things properly. So you can't, under this package, in certain instances, the two thirds vote with a, with a simple majority vote. So, but generally speaking, you know, for other aspects of the zoning, they're, they're not related to this housing component. So these changes are basically meant to lower the threshold by which local zoning can be changed. To allow these types of housing to be built and permitted. The same thing is done again in the, in the special permit process. So this, this section goes on actually to show other types of changes. So even modifying the regulations concerning the bulk height and structures, et cetera. To allow for additional housing units beyond what would otherwise be permitted on the existing zoning ordinance or by law. So one can very broadly read that to say, well, if in the R2 district, if someone wanted to reduce the density of the zoning dimensional requirements. Maybe that, an argument can be made that more housing units could go in there and therefore this would be eligible for the, the two thirds vote. I think those things, we're going to see some, probably some case law, depending on how long these provisions are kept in the state. I think we're going to have some case law created around these types of things. We might see some litigation over. Whether something should have been a two thirds vote or a 50 50 vote, but at any rate. The bottom line, what I think you'd want to pick up from all this is that it's only a 50, it's only a majority vote now. To change, to do some of the housing initiatives that we might be interested in doing here. And that, that gives us some ability that we didn't previously have. We had to reach a two thirds vote from the council. So eight of the 11 members would have to vote in favor of whatever it might be. And then the adoption of, of the permitting themselves, the, the special permits themselves, which is further down here, so. You can see right here now, this provision, zoning ordinance or bylaws can provide that special permits be granted for reducing parking. To basically allow, you know, more housing to fit in there. Now, again, you have to have the tie back to clearly demonstrably an excess. Between creating the more housing units as a result of, you know, waiving, reducing some requirements. But. You know, this, this section down here underneath 24, this is a pretty powerful one, especially, this is the one where, to leave this question in particular, that. A special permit issued by the Special Permit Granting Authority, so the planning board or yours, shall require a simple majority vote for any of the following. And so multifamily housing that's located in a half mile of a computer rail station, if there is multifamily housing that's allowed there. That's only a simple majority vote now, and, and I think to a point Rick had raised earlier, that's a, that overrides. So the zoning act, you know, local communities operate under home rule, except where the zoning act controls provisions. And so this instance, the zoning act is telling our local communities, including Newburyport, that it's a, it's a simple majority vote now. For multifamily housing, whereas even though our local zoning might currently say, you know, something needs to be a special permit, which would be a two thirds. We have to essentially go back and rewrite certain portions of our zoning to sort of match that, but this zoning act controls. These changes and zoning act control in the interim. And so we might see a little bit of new case law created about. Maybe some neighborhoods or folks disputing a zoning change and whether or not it should have been a two thirds vote or some, you know, some majority.
Kind of maybe it's a funny question, but what qualifies as a bus station?
Yeah, so there, there is not a definition of bus station, as I recall, in this new legislation.
Do we have any? Because I know we have buses of some sort and we also.
Yeah, I don't think that anything we have is going to be considered legally a bus station. We do have the MBTA, the MBRTA stop, if you will. You know, down by the, the parking garage. I don't think they're going to count that or the commuter rail or the park and ride. As those types of areas.
Andy, one thing that. I'm not sure, somebody must have picked up on at this point, which is very strange, is the definition of mixed use. And, you know, it defines a mixed use development as anything that has some residential and some non-residential in it. So, and, and first of all, I want to say I'm not really that concerned about the majority vote. I, I worked in New Hampshire and. All zoning is adopted by majority vote there, so I'm not that concerned about it, but the, but. Understanding what's actually going to qualify for this is, is interesting. I can imagine. Somebody who wanted to do a large industrial development. And wanted to get the majority vote, so they decided to include three dwelling units in it. And that would, but under this, under this statute, I think it would make it a mixed use development. I think that's something that. The state is probably going to have to tighten up.
I agree entirely with you, Rick. And there's the language several places in here. I have similar feelings about clarifications that are going to be needed, disputes that will happen. And potentially litigation on, in some instances. Is there sort of a rush? You know, it seems to me, I was not involved in all this process. We sort of track as best we can what's happening with, you know, the legislature and how that pans out with. Efforts to change zoning in, the zoning act in Massachusetts for years. But obviously it seemed sort of an opportune time to make certain changes. This is sort of a mixed blessing, right? There's, it's, it's not 100% clear in, in the one hand, and it's not. It's not entirely flexible either. It's sort of, you know, partially to certain things that we've, we see are beneficial. And again, just like the zoning act today, there are little holes that the courts might need to fill in if they're not clarified by the legislature before. Certain disputes arise. So we'll have to keep an eye on, on these pieces here. I do think we should. We'll have some more discussion, I think we should, about our local zoning here and any adjustments we think might be appropriate. Maybe if you'd like, that could be carried over to the next agenda. Members could, you know, we could have a, maybe a brief discussion. I'll defer to the chair, I'm pretty sure on that, but maybe getting some feedback on concerns folks might have or ideas. For bringing forward now changes that might be more palatable as a majority vote as opposed to simple.
Some of these things might just go into your, your housekeeping thing that you're, you're about to bring forward. If there's, you know, just. If there's something that contradicts this law, maybe you need to just look at that, just to.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, you're correct. I didn't mean so much the housekeeping update to deal with this, but more the. If you feel that, you know, we should be trying to reduce the threshold in one spot or another by, you know. Leave that to you folks. And obviously, as you think about any zoning changes that might be brought forward as a result of the early discussions this evening. You know, consider that those might be a little easier thresholds to get over, so.
Yeah, I think what usually happens is we trip over something when we have an application. And it's a little embarrassing, so it might be wise if anyone thinks of. Scenarios or situations that we test out those ideas with you. And, and any of our planning board meetings at this time of the agenda. Just to make sure that at least whatever we can think of in advance can be incorporated into changes in the zoning. So that we aren't caught at a point where we should have already made the decision.
I don't know if there's any other questions that folks have.
I have a general question, Andy. I mean. It's about, about zoning in general, the state versus local zoning. I mean, generally the town can write their own zoning. But you said when, when it's part of the state's zoning act, that overrides local zoning. Can you just talk a little bit more? Contextualize that a little bit more for me?
Yeah, sure. So historically, actually going way back, it used to be the zoning enabling act, and so it gave authority to local communities to adopt zoning. And then it was changed years later, the statutes and then some of the case law about a change and it was essentially. What communities are actually doing is adopting zoning both underneath 48, the zoning act, but also underneath just generically home rule. Your authority to adopt local regulations, provided they don't, they're under the, you know, Massachusetts constitution and they don't disagree with what the legislature has done. They don't conflict with, say, the building code, for instance. You can't conflict with the building code under local zoning. So, but because the zoning act today is not an enabling act, it's just basically one that sets parameters on certain issues that are addressed in local zoning. It sets, you know, minimums, maximums and certain definitions that they're outright, particularly things like how is, how does the special permit process work? For instance. We have to comply with those standards. There, there's little, you know, debates we could have about some language in there, but for the most part. Everything in the zoning act controls across the Commonwealth and so everything we do needs to essentially be in compliance with that. And so these changes under 40R, under 48, including the fact that we have to have multifamily housing around the train station. Or in order to get certain grants, the fact that.
That's an interesting piece. I mean, we wouldn't have to do it if we didn't want grants, but we depend on grants, correct?
We do pursue, obviously all, but almost all of the grants that they're, they're being touched here. And I think for good, I, I, to me, it's a good policy from the state's perspective. There's at least a good nexus to make between. Spending some of those funds, typically those programs are for urban, you know, or areas like our downtown or our train station, for instance. They're for infrastructure improvements and things like that. So it makes sense to me that they would want to. Provide some leverage and get local communities to have the right type of zoning around their train stations. Because we do have a little bit of a chaotic situation in Massachusetts where every town is doing its own thing under zoning. It's not really, doesn't work, work from the Commonwealth's perspective. Necessarily to unify things.
Andy, could you go back to the, or down to the section where it speaks to the Permit Granting Authority? There were at least three scenarios that it covered. And I just wanted to sort of follow up and imagine how that would affect us in making decisions. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
If I look at B, would that be relevant to say a potential rezoning for mixed use development on Story Avenue?
Well, this, this isn't, this section is dealing with the actual special permits, the issuance of the special permits.
No, all right. So if we, this is issuing, yeah, okay. So let's say if we had done that, if, if. Okay, well, let's back up. So. First of all, to get the city council to adopt new zoning for that area.
Yep. Multifamily or mixed use, you can get it with a 50 50 vote as a, or a majority vote.
Simple majority. Good. Okay. Then when we review an application, say for the old Kmart building. Again, that decision would only be, would only need a majority of planning board members for it to pass. To be approved.
Right, you have to have, it has to be one of these definitions. So A, multifamily or B, mixed use center. And like the downtown would be considered a commercial activity, a center of commercial activity.
Well, I'm, I'm saying specifically the Kmart, if we stay with the Story Avenue. Example.
Right, that's, that's the center of commercial activity.
Right, so if we had an application for mixed use development in there.
Yep.
Our decision could be made with a simple majority.
Correct. It would be a lot easier and smoother, even, even your attendance at your meetings might be a little easier.
I think the challenging one to justify might be C. Because you have to show that the reduction in parking will result in production of additional housing units. Do they have to be affordable with a big A or a little A? It's not saying anything about affordability here, right?
So Bonnie, one thing I was thinking about with this one in particular, this, if, if this were in place when we were doing the Market Street project. That is now beginning to be developed right now, next to. Summer Street.
Yep.
And you remember, there was this, a lot of discussion about the number of parking spaces and. And I know that it was also related to the downtown and so forth, but this would have allowed us to reduce the parking requirement for that building. In order to get one or two more. in order to get one or two more dwelling units in there. So it's a, by majority vote rather than by super majority.
Right.
True, of course, the, the fallout or the, the downside of that is where are those people gonna park? And Market Street and, and Summer Street would have our heads, but anyway. But yes, we were determined to do it, we could with a, with a simple majority. And that may come up, there's another space, the old, is it the mobile station? Whatever the station was next door, just down behind the police station on Market Street. They haven't come back yet, but they gave us a, we had a, what was that, pre-application conference with them. They may, that might be a situation where the reduced parking would lead to additional housing. But as I said, as I asked earlier, and I don't remember if anybody answered me, it just says production of additional housing units, it doesn't say at what market value, right?
Wait, this is just to produce housing?
Just to produce housing.
Well, and also, A, reduced parking space. Oh, to unit ratio, okay. So then, so then, if, in that example you gave, Rick, I think there were what, six units? I forget.
Five, five, maybe, I'm not sure.
Okay, so then, if you, if you halved it, I mean, cuz it, it's not like for every car you take away, you get a, you, you get a new unit. You only get a bathroom for every car you remove, so.
Yeah, this is gonna work on bigger projects, not small.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So it does affect us as well as the city council. They adopt the amendments, but we adopt, we, we permit the, we permit under the adopted amendment, the special permit.
So, so this is changing the, the ratios, both for the adoption of the zoning and for the granting of a special permit?
Right, right. For these certain categories, right? Interestingly, not for the other categories, but for, for all this, anything related to multifamily or mixed use.
So, so it's assumed that creating more housing is in multiples, not single-family residences.
Yes.
Yes, there's, there's definitely strong advocacy, I think, based on, you know, the typical sort of issues we talked about with trans-oriented development, you know, vehicles generating, you know, pollution and sprawl and so forth. Clearly, this is designed to generate multifamily or denser walkable neighborhoods or developments.
When is it effective?
Immediately, it's effective now.
Very interesting, that's good.
This was adopted as part of an economic development bill because it doesn't provide the reduced voting for, for economic development, it provides the voting for housing. So, so it's a, it's a merger of different things. And the, the overall bill is an economic development bill. And, you know, you would have thought they would have reduced it across the board and said, all zoning gets adopted by majority vote now, but that didn't happen.
The political process as we know it.
Yep.
Almost like.
It's the sausage at the end of the process, yeah.
Yeah. Great, well, thank you. Are there any other updates from anybody or questions that, since we're having a pretty good, open discussion tonight? All right, well, if there's nothing more, you know what I'm gonna ask for? I need a motion to adjourn.
I had Tanya.
Tanya?
I know, I've been so quiet. I make a mo- motion to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, and do I have a second?
I can do something, I'm, I'm so tired these days.
I'll second, I'll second.
Alden, and final roll call of the night, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. So we are adjourned.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.